Nobody in the cafeteria.
You ready? Welcome citizens and officials and guests to the Donna Brookfield Special Town Meeting. See everybody call to order. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Tintascro Regional High School, 319 Brookfield Road, Sturbridge, Mass. on Thursday, the fifteenth day of October in the year 2020 at 6:30 PM, then and there to act on the following articles. This has been posted by, assigned by the Clarence Snyder, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Beth Coughlin, Linda Lincoln, and it was posted by Richard Lapierre on October 1st at the post office in the town hall. We agree we have a quorum? We have a quorum, Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Please stand and we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, quick, some quick notices. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, please mute it or shut it off. The school has requested no food in the auditorium, so water is fine. Only registered voters should be in the main sections. Any non-registered voters should be all seated in the upper left-hand corner in the balcony. All speakers must approach and use the microphone. When you speak for the very first time, please put your, present with your name and your address. After that, there's no need to do that. If you can, please do not touch the microphone as little as possible. There are wipes when you're done speaking. You're going to wipe that down and there are wipes and disinfectant. Does every voter have a yellow card? Please hold them up just to be sure, everybody. Okay, thank you. There are time limits for speakers. The original presenter of an article will be afforded five minutes to present the motion. More time may be allotted if required to explain a lengthy motion. Speakers on articles will be afforded two minutes time allotted, and we do have a timekeeper. And a warning will be given when you have thirty seconds left, and then when your time is up, we'll be asked to step away from the microphone. If you want to talk again, you go to the end of the line until everybody else has spoken. Move the question, if the motion is made to move the question, a vote will be taken, requires a two-thirds vote. We do ask that you wear masks all the time. If you have trouble speaking or being able to be understood, you may be able to remove your mask when you're at the microphone, but we ask that you wear your mask all the other time. Maintain good social distancing. There is a bathroom out to my left, it's all the way down the end of the car, so if you're in the balcony, you're going to have to come down and go down this hall to the bathroom. Before we get started on the warrant, the Board of Selectmen wanted to make a statement.
Ms. Moderator, before we do that, I'd like to offer a motion that non-residents of Jeff Blake, Town Council, Laurie Burkes, our accountant, Sarah Hunter, our treasurer, and Karen Traynor, our administrative assistant, be allowed to speak.
Motion has been made, is there a second? All in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
I have a brief statement.
A brief statement, okay.
Thank you for this special town meeting. When the town met last-
Hold it closer.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, so, when the town met last at the annual town meeting, we were faced many challenges and enormous uncertainty. The COVID crisis was in full swing, the Department of Revenue had recommended a budget based on twenty percent reduction in local aid. The town budgeted for increases in insurance plus past financial mistakes. In addition, our financial audit was just underway, the first in six years. With this backdrop, it was the goal of the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee to maintain a stable tax rate and retain all Brookfield employees, causing no layoffs or furloughs, or as other towns were facing. Through the cooperation of the town employees committees, we accomplished those goals. It was not easy, not perfect. The Board of Selectmen scheduled an October fifteenth Special Town Meeting with the anticipation that we would have a clearer understanding of the town's financial standing with better information from the Mass Department of Revenue, and then to meet with other, to meet with other adjustments. In hindsight, we should have set this meeting a little bit later this month or in early November. As of only, much of what we learned tonight or have, have learned has only come to us in the last week and as late as this morning. School funding was updated earlier today, unfortunately favorable to the town. What we know now is local aid is restored to the FY20 levels, so more, so more than we budgeted before. Our insurance negotiations yielded favorable premium for the town, and the budget reductions we chose to take in June placed us in a position for stability today. One major regret of the Special Town Meeting is that we ran out of time to address the shortcomings in employee compensation. The Advisory, Board of Selectmen Advisory and Personnel Committee are committed to work with department heads over the next eight months and then, and be ready for the annual town meeting in June to adjust wages based on a study completed by the Collins Center in reality of the local labor market to bring in town employees under proper wage alignment. We have, you will note that the Board of Selectmen recommends revising the FY21 budget and proposes a two percent toll retroactive to July 1st, as seen in Article 16. Other articles provide necessary funding for the town's priorities, but we have deferred most capital items which would require borrowing until the annual town meeting, which will, for which we will need the results from the current audit and another, another audit in the spring to better position the town to borrow for capital items. Capital Improvement Planning Committee has done an excellent job, and with the advisory, we look forward to implementing their plan. At the annual town meeting last June, we had battened down the hatches and prepared for rough financial news from DOR and the possibility from the tax base. What we now know, what we now know is that much of this has not materialized, and for this, we are grateful. But along with advisory, we still see major uncertainty, the COVID pandemic, future state aid, and what we learned from future audits. We will continue to make necessary steps to improve the town's financial position, repaying monies to stabilization as promised in FY20 Annual Town Meeting, June 2019, and to stabilize the tax rate this year and next. Again, we thank you for your support and understanding.
Thank you, Parker. The advisory also wanted to speak? Go ahead, Steve.
Hello? It works, nice. Hello, my name is Steve Gillis, I'm the Chair of the Advisory Committee, to my left and behind me are the rest of the committee. We wanted to update our citizens to the work being done by our financial team to stabilize and secure Brookfield's financial position. The FY19 audit started in July, and it's almost near completion. We are expecting audit results by the end of October. The town expects to receive an audit management letter in early November, which will outline their findings and directives to our financial team, for example, yearly audits, we can expect that. Town accountant will be closing our fiscal year 20 on time by the end of October, and we expect to close out, to close out FY20 in the computer system and submit the FY20 balance sheet in October. The FY balance sheet is that which generates free cash. We will submit FY20 Schedule A, and that's what generates the state aid, we will submit the Schedule A by November 30th. And one note is that this is the first year in many, many years that the balance sheet, Schedule A, and other things will be submitted on time to Department of Revenue, so things are moving correctly. FY audit has been scheduled for FY20, the audit has been scheduled, and the auditor, with the auditor to start in early spring. This will be, put the town on a yearly audit cycle. Reconciliation of all trust funds and all employee withholding accounts, and removed all prior year variances, so this is a lot of good work. Also, we have new policies and procedures have been implemented in the town, Board of Selectmen have voted to approve them on September 9th. These provide much-needed financial oversight and transparency, and they will be published on the town website shortly. Our new treasurer, working with town accountant, has balanced cash through, at the end of 2000 FY20, that is. The treasurer's FY21 cashbook is being maintained. Work is being done on reconciling some of the tax title accounts and moving that process along. The treasurer is up to date with turnovers, Harper's payroll rates, Mass teacher and department unemployment, restructuring bank accounts for federal rates, trust funds reconciled, and will be closed out of all bank, all bank accounts. So, a lot of excellent work there, so, as we can see, we continue to improve our operations and teamwork. Still, the advisory believes that we are not out of this yet, as Clarence just stated, will state again, COVID uncertainty is still with us, and it will continue to derive our decisions, and in this light, we will continue to be conservative in our budgeting for FY22, and we, and we hope to continue and strengthen this building Brookfield's financial position for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, moving on to the articles. Article number one, to see if the town, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to pay an invoice for FY20, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Snyder.
I move that the town raise an appropriate $419.06 to pay a global matello invoice for FY20.
Motion has been made in second, is there any discussion?
This is a late heating.
I'm sorry?
This is a late heating bill.
A late heating bill. This requires a nine tenths vote. All those in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed? I see no opposed, it's unanimous. Article number two, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to pay an invoice for FY20, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Snyder.
I move that the town raise appropriate $302.40 to pay a Stonebridge Press invoice for FY20.
Motion has been made in second, is there any discussion?
This is a late bill, which was sent to the wrong department.
Also needs nine tenths. All those in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed? I see no opposed, that's unanimous. Article number three, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to pay an invoice for FY20, or take any other action thereto.
Ms. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Snyder.
I move that the town raise appropriate $360.36 to pay the Commonwealth of Massachusetts an invoice for FY20.
Motion has been made in second, is there any discussion?
This was a meals tax, overdue meals tax payment.
This also requires nine tenths. All those in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed? I see no opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. Article number four, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to pay a prior year bill, or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Snyder.
I move that the town raise an appropriate $300 to pay the town a set invoice for nursing services for FY20.
Motion has been made in second, is there any discussion? Also requires nine tenths. All those in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed? There are no opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you. Article five, to see if the town will vote to change the name of the fleet repair replacement vehicle account to the fleet repair replacement vehicle or equipment account, or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to change the name of the fleet repair replacement vehicle account to the fleet repair replacement vehicle and equipment account.
Motion has been made in seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Article number six, I'm not going to read this whole article, but I'll summarize it. To see if the town will vote, vote pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 38H, or any other enabling authority to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Lincoln. Ms. Coughlin.
I move that the town vote to approve Article Six as written in the warrant.
Motion has been made in seconded. Any discussion? Can somebody answer that one?
Al Jones, Principal Assessor.
Address, Al, please.
What's that?
Your address.
Oh, 48 Allen Road.
Thank you.
This is to create a pilot named Louis Texas for the proposed solar off of, behind Long Hill and Town Farm Roads. If, when it gets created, the amount of power that is generated, if we can enter into a pilot, we can, we will get some revenue from it. This is a standard, it's been done two other times in the last few years, it's a very standard agreement, it just allows the Board of Assessors and primarily the Board of Selectmen to go into, enter into a discussion, and ultimately enter into an agreement for the townspeople, on behalf of the townspeople.
Thank you, Parker. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to create a position of foreman for the Highway Department, or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to create a position of foreman for the Highway Department.
Motion has been made in seconded, is there any discussion? Mr. O'Connell. Name and address, please.
Peter O'Connell, 7 Hayden Avenue. I noticed that there's no money attached to this article, will the foreman be eligible for a change in salary?
It would not be at this time, again, this is a structural change, and we would look to the annual town meeting as we look to the Collins Report and others to structure what they would be based on that assignment.
You also? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify your raising your vote. And opposed? One opposed. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to the, to the fire station repair account, or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise an appropriate $4,000 to fund the fire station repair account.
Motion has been made in seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to the town for the town's match in the Department of Energy grant for a solar carport design at the police station.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Lincoln.
I move that the town raise an appropriate $1,500 to the fund the town's match of the Department of Energy grant for a solar carport at the police station.
Motion has been made in seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to purchase a generator for Forest Central Street, or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I would move that the town raise an appropriate $33,000 to purchase a generator for Central Street Fire Department.
Motion has been made in seconded. Question? Please approach the mic, please. Please approach the mic so we can hear you. Name, name and address, please.
Gary Gillar, it's $18 Road in Brookfield. My question is this, what kind of a generator are you getting that costs $33,000? What kind of a generator are you getting that costs $33,000?
An emergency generator for the- It, oh, yeah, Gary. It's, it's a emergency generator for, for the fire station or the emergency complex. What, what happened?
This would be like a dual fuel, fuel genar?
Oh, a big one. And if Peter, I saw the fire chief somewhere, Peter, do you want to provide additional information? Where is Peter?
I don't, I don't see him here.
Yep, I found Peter.
Oh, there he is.
So you, so you would be guaranteed power even if no one can get to them?
Yes.
Well, that's your expense, but you can get a gasoline, even a propane gasoline, $5,000 maybe?
Peter, do you want to address that?
It'd be natural gas fed, we've got natural gas running right in front of the place.
Pete, Peter, name, name and address for this.
Peter Martel, Mistle Road. It would be natural gas fed, you run the line off Central Street, and it would run the entire compound F4 Central Street, the fire station, the ambulance garage, the large building out back, and it would be automated with a test cycle, so power goes out a few seconds, we're back up. Uh, natural gas, yeah, street gas. Uh, we've got enough usage on Central Street, we're thinking, and actually that same line runs a heat for one of the buildings, so subheat on it should be pretty good.
But, just to add, while Peter went and finds his chair, the, the grant writer has in fact found a grant application or-
That's my understanding, is grant writer's got something in through PIM, I believe, possibly favorable. I mean, it's worth noting that, you know, we passed this today, I'm not ordering it tomorrow, we're going to see where that grant lands, but that grant is only, it's what's, it's what's seventy-five percent, so we'd have to come over 25. So even if we get the grant, we still need some seed money.
Yes, thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Peter. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify your raising your vote. And opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to cover the portion of the expense of providing an alum treatment to South Pond, or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Lincoln.
I move that the town raise an appropriate $25,000 to fund a portion of the expense of providing an alum treatment to South Pond.
Motion has been made in seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to cover the deficit of the fund of 250 OSRP grant account.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Lincoln.
I move that the town transfer $2,000 from the master plan account to fund the deficit and fund 250 OSRP grant account.
Motion has been made in seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed? Motion passes, unanimous. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to adopt and accept a provision of Section 20 of Chapter 32B of the Massachusetts General Law, as amended by Section 15 of Chapter 218 of Acts of 2016, establishing an other post-employment benefits liability trust fund authorized to the Board of Selectmen and the Treasurer to execute the declaration of the trust, creating an expanded trust.
Ms. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Snyder.
I move that the town adopt and accept provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapters 32B, Section 2, and otherwise approve this article as written in Article 13 of the Special Town Meeting warrant.
Motion has been made in seconded. Is there any discussion?
This sets up a retirement account, which we would be looking at the annual town meeting to fund.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify your raising your card. And opposed? Motion passes. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to fund acquisition of town administrator for fiscal year 2021, or take any other relative action thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. O'Connell.
I move that the town vote to add a town administrator line to the Selectmen's fiscal year 2021 annual operating budget, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $37,500 to fund that line in the fiscal year, fiscal 2021 operating budget.
Is there a second? We have a second. Discussion? Yes?
Do I have a chance to make it to the first part?
I'm sorry.
Do I have a chance to make it?
Go right ahead.
A handout was provided as you came in to register, so it's a, it's a blue handout that explains why you're proposing a group of citizens petition for the support of this article. So if you vote for this article, you enable the Selectmen to hire a full-time, experienced small-town administrator about halfway through the year, in early January. This town administrator would supervise and coordinate the work of the Selectmen's office- office and make a proposal for staffing that office in fiscal year 22 that ensures employment of existing staff, either in the selectman’s office or in another department to replace retiring staff. We should not use loyal and hard-working staff. The town administrator would work with the financial team to implement the recommendations of the auditors, work with department heads to coordinate the development of the fiscal year 22 budget, and work with the treasurer to collect a portion of the $1.16 million in back taxes owed to the treasurer and the town. The town administrator would serve as the chief personnel officer of the town and implement the wage and salary recommendations made by the Collins Center two years ago. I want to say that the town can afford, and now, right now, and could have afforded two years ago, to implement a fair wage and salary program. And if we had had a town administrator, we would have by now. Because we have not done this, we have caused employees to lose trust in us as voters and our selectmen as well. We can and should fund both the town administrator and a fair wage and salary program. We don’t have to choose, we can afford both right now. The town administrator would improve communication with department heads and the general public, and it would provide staff support for the master and capital planning committees, the recreation and open space committee, and the town hall improvement committee, and coordinate work with the grant writer. You may have questions about what a town administrator, how it’s different from our administrative assistant. A town administrator has much more professional training in finance and budget, personnel management, project management, and has more authority than an administrative assistant to act on behalf of the selectmen. The town administrator is at the same level as department heads and therefore does not supervise them. They coordinate with them, they communicate, they support the work of volunteer committees, plans, they plan, propose, and implement projects. In making this proposal, we are not blaming anyone for the difficult situation we’ve been in in the past several years. Indeed, I want to personally thank the selectmen, this group of selectmen, and previous selectmen for all their hard work. Many of us served on a... Many of us served on a town administrator study committee nearly 10 years ago that unanimously recommended the hiring of a town administrator, but several boards of selectmen took no action. Since then, things have only gotten much more difficult, demonstrating that a volunteer board of selectmen, no matter how hard they work, simply cannot keep up with the demands we place on them to manage a $9 million organization operating budget. They need to delegate work to a trained town administrator. Can we afford to pay a town administrator? Yes, but we haven’t heard here is that we have an unexpected amount of revenue this year, enough to fund this whole warrant and a town administrator and still put money back in stabilization as planned and still stay about $400,000 under our lending limit. So we can afford it, and it should be a no brainer. We don’t ask whether we can afford to pay to run our schools for the superintendent and principals, it’s a given. If we think back a few years ago, when the elected assessors recommended that they become a policy board and they designated the day-to-day work delegated, the day-to-day work of doing the assessing to Principal Assessor Al Jones, we see the tremendous progress that was made.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. So over the past 10 years, we have wasted money or failed to collect revenues that would have paid a town administrator, given fair wages to town employees, and funded improvements to town roads, buildings, and equipment. If we fail to take this important step now to pass and fund, funding for town administrator, we will regret it later. I urge you to pass this article. Thank you.
Discussion? Ms. Lincoln.
My name is Linda Lincoln, and I’m a member of Brookfield Board of Selectmen, and I would like to address some of the items on the handout that was distributed prior to the meeting, and these, I would like you all to please note that this is my personal opinion. It seems to me that voting to fund a town administrator is premature and unnecessary at this time. First of all, many of the issues listed as reasons for hiring a town administrator are out being addressed or have been resolved. And if funding is approved, the money would be taken from the $120,000 selectmen promised taxpayers would be paid back in destabilization. This is the last article on the warrant. And hiring a town administrator who answers to the Board of Selectmen, in my opinion, is a waste of money. If you need someone with complete authority over personnel, you need a town manager. And to fund a town administrator for half a year does not make any sense. First of all, the town needs an experienced candidate, and odds are that no one will leave another job for six months, for a six-month stint, with no guarantee of the salary being funded, being on the frame, timeframe. I believe the town can accomplish the same goals of a town administrator utilizing current staff, the Board of Selectmen, as well as the board members and volunteers. Before we rush out to spend taxpayers’ money, I propose we put together a firm plan, hold regular department head meetings to improve communication, and to commit to achieving the necessary goals. With the current administrative assistant who works full-time, our financial team, the grant writer, and active committees such as the CIPC, I believe we can eliminate the need to spend taxpayers’ monies on a town administrator at this time. Regarding the town’s financial issue, the town accountant and the town treasurer have been working diligently and have solved many of the town’s past issues and are laying the groundwork for a successful financial future. In fact, the current accountant contract allows her to serve as a financial director at no additional cost to the taxpayers. The town treasurer has been doing HR duties also at no additional cost. And there was an article on tonight’s warrant to fund the excess HR responsibilities.
Thirty seconds, Linda.
And also do not underestimate the duties of the community Board of Selectmen. As for the reference to part of the Board of Selectmen, when I was chair, I was at the town hall nearly four days a week, and also working behind the scenes on a daily basis to manage many matters, including securing both the accountant and the treasurer’s firm. I know that my colleagues are equally dedicated. In closing, I would like to thank the... I ask that the town taxpayers do not rush to find Article 14, we’re in the middle of a pandemic. We do not know what the future will bring financially or otherwise, and now is not the time to make such drastic changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
I’m Mary Lou Knight, 20 Lane, 21. My question is, if not now, when? We have had two study committees, one in 2002. At that point, they said, not right now, but when the town government becomes more complex, when management becomes more difficult, yes, we will need a town administrator. I was on the study committee in 2012. At that time, we interviewed current selectmen, past selectmen, employees, other town administrators, other town selectmen. The consensus was, yes, we need to hire a town administrator now. That was eight years ago. If not now, when? I would like to see someone on board to help with next year’s budget process, to help with the communication among employees, to help us implement the Collins Center. We submitted that report two years ago. It has not yet been implemented. Just if not now, when?
Tony. Takes a second, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Anthony Avon, High Street, Brookfield. I just want to address a couple of things that have been said that I think are, that maybe everyone should have a little clarification on before they take it for, you know, for what it is. First of all, I am in total agreeance with Ms. Lincoln about some of these things that are on here. These are things we’re fixing now. If not when, well, when you break a leg, you wait until it’s completely healed before you start running a marathon, is the answer to that question. I just think that it’s, you know, one thing you have to consider, Mr. Snyder mentioned the beginning of the meeting, that we’re going to enact the Collins Center upgrades next year. That’s a lot of money. It’s a lot of money. Add $75,000 to that, and think about how much we’ve been struggling to make sure that our budgets have been met. Now, I understand that our finances have been bad. You know, on here, it says we have 75 hours of business discussion and decision-making. I also want to remind everybody that our selectmen work hard all week, not just from their meetings, as do the members of this advisory board also work toward your business on a constant basis, as does this lovely woman to my left over here, who puts in tons of work for this town. It’s not just 75 hours a week, it’s a lot of money. The Collins Center is going to cost us huge. Add $75,000 to that. Sure, our taxes look great right now. You know how hard we’ve worked for that? And then we’re going to bump them up. We went balancing, we’re going, but possibly could with all this extra money. I just think that to, to just go ahead and fund it now, I don’t think it makes a ton of sense for financial reasons. I think we need to make sure that we’re done with our audits, that we have all our finances in order. I mean, Peter’s on the capital improvement committee, you know, he should know how much money we have coming up with things that need to be fixed. To just say that we have money that easily can do this, we have money because we squeezed every department in this town.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. We squeezed every department in this town to give us money back in case we didn’t get money from the state because of this COVID. And be in the middle of a pandemic and make a decision like this, I think is foolish on our part, and I think that the money that we ended up getting from the state that wasn’t used for the departments needs to be used for the things that we are earmarking it for, including, as Ms. Lincoln said, the money that was promised two years ago to be returned to stabilization that we can finally do now. We’ve got to get our town in order and get the stabilization rebuilt so we can build a bond rating and start getting loans. I just think that it’s not a great decision, and I encourage everyone to vote now.
Thank you. Okay. Bill, and then you. Bill Simpson.
Bill Simpson, 30 North Brookfield Road. I just like to speak in favor of this article. I get it, it’s a, there’s no good time for this, no, and it costs money. That’s the nature of the beast here, but we have a huge organization that we’re running by the skin of our teeth and by the dedicated efforts of our select board, all three of you work your tails off, I know this, and the advisory board. You guys, I don’t even want to guess how many hours you spent in meetings in the last couple of weeks getting ready for this meeting. It’s a tremendous amount of work, and we’re doing it on volunteers’ energy and free time. I think to properly manage an organization the size that we are collectively organizing, we need someone who’s there every day, who can oversee all the different parts and pieces that are moving, who can look to the future to help us gather the grants, work with Cathy and work with all the other groups. We’re doing a great job now. I mean, some of the grants that we’ve gotten have been amazing, but that’s because some of the, we’ve had the initiative from the select board to bring in the grant writer and manage that process. You know, I wish, you know, I wish it didn’t cost anything, but it does cost some investment on our part, but I think we will reap the benefits over time in terms of quality management, planning, and structural organization. I think, I think it’s worth it. You know, it’s not an easy decision, and I think it’s a, you know, it’s an investment that we have to make, but I think it’s an important investment in our future in moving professionally this organization that we all manage. We want to move it forward professionally. I think this is the best step forward in that direction. So I urge you to vote in favor of the article. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Ziri, West Bain Street. Just want to echo what Linda Lincoln said and Tony regarding some of these things. Lifelong citizen of the town of Brookfield. I don’t support this article, I just wanted to let you know of a few things that we’re facing in the future because of this pandemic. As far as funding this, State 8 is again in jeopardy this year. It wasn’t a situation this year, but the state is forecasting billions of dollars shortfall projected for fiscal year 22. So really trying to fund this right now is a real serious matter. The other thing to consider is, three jobs, if we go forward and hire this proposed town administrator, we’re going to lose our administrative assistant, we’re going to lose the assistant to that administrative assistant to the selectmen, and our grant writer. That’s going to happen. We can’t support all three of those positions and the town administrator, so we need to be concerned about that. Our administrative assistant right now works very hard, 40 hours a week, 10-hour days, constantly under a lot of pressure to get the job done, and she works hard, always prepares well. I think we’ve got that covered. The other thing is, there’s been some issues brought forward about how solvent we are as a community. You all know that we’ve recently hired a treasurer and our accountant. They have brought things in order in a short amount of time. We’re fiscally solvent. As of right now, the books are reconciled to the best of my knowledge, so we’re moving forward in that direction. That’s really good. As far as HR problems go, I’m not aware of any HR problems right now that aren’t being addressed by the treasurer that we have, and I don’t see how a town administrator is going to be able to pitch in and do that.
Thirty seconds.
We also have to think about this. Any town administrator we hire in the near future is going to be delegating from the Board of Selectmen’s direction, so they don’t have complete control. Complete control is still going to be in the hands of the Board of Selectmen. Just remember that. The town administrator isn’t going to have the kind of authority that some of you think they will to manage this town. That’s still going to come from three elected members of the Board of Selectmen. Remember that. That’s all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I speak? Hi, everyone, my name is Tom Regan.
Go ahead, Dave. You’re next.
Yeah, my next. Dave Holcraft, 26 Allen Road, Brookfield. When this started about a year, two years ago, everybody thinks that getting a town administrator was going to keep our town accountant in line. A town administrator is not going to know what the accountant is doing, she’s not going to know if they’re putting the proper entries, monies, et cetera, et cetera, nor the treasurer. She’s not going to know what the treasurer is doing either, and that seems to be the problem of why a few, a group in town would like to have a town administrator. A town manager has full control. They don’t take orders from the selectmen. Selectmen give orders to the administrator of what is to be delegated on a day-to-day basis. Now, if we get a town administrator, I also want you all to know that they’re going to probably request a car, well, most towns give an administrator an automobile, plus benefits, plus lots of vacation. And then once, if you’re trying to get an administrator in here on January, I think that’s rushing it, and then she’s going to have to get acclimated to the town. We’re in a pandemic, we’re in a financial crisis of trying to get out of it, which the town accountant and the treasurer are doing a great job, and the selectmen are helping them get through this. And I hate to see this turned upside down when we have a town Karen Trainer helping everybody to keep it together, and then all of a sudden, we’re going to turn this all upside down, we’re going to be right back where we started from. And we do not have the money. We do not have the money. And our tax bills continue to go up. I don’t know if you all checked your tax bills, but they’re climbing, they’re not going down. We have the highest taxes in the four Brookfields. We have the highest assessment.
Thirty seconds, Dave.
In the four Brookfields. So I urge you to put this off, give it a couple of years, and let’s see how things go. But they are not going to help, the town administrator is not going to be overseeing the town accountant to see if she’s doing the job properly or not, or the treasurer. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom? And then Beth, you were next.
Hi, everyone, my name is Tom Regan, vice-chair of the advisory board, 6 Mockingbird Lane. My concern with this position and that I’ve raised with several people who’ve discussed this with me is, I understand the expected benefit of the position, and... And yeah, it looks good. Looks really good. My question to them is, what examples do we have of a town like, similar to Brookfield? In the recent past, bringing in a town administrator, and how did that work out? My concern is, there are town administrators out there, and maybe they're good town administrators applying structure to what would otherwise be a dysfunctional town. Some of them are probably dysfunctional administrators who are in a structure that otherwise works well for them. So what is it like to bring a town administrator on board? What lessons can we learn? My other concern would be, we're a small town. We're, we're a small town. And so what kind of person is going to want to administer a small town? A rookie. So I, I don't know, that would, that could be handled in the hiring process, but that's a concern of mine and that's something that I think I would like more time to think it through before approving this. And finally, just on a number sense, I understand the if-not-now-when, but I think right now we do, we have dodged, financially, we have dodged a bullet this year. State Aid came through for us, which we did not expect. I would like to see, I would like to be confident it's coming through next year before I make a commitment to funding a town administrator at seventy-five thousand dollars a year when we're already intending to do a major salary treatment in fiscal year twenty-two.
Thirty seconds.
I'm done. Thank you.
Beth, I think you were next.
So first off, I want to make it very clear that I strongly support bringing in a town administrator. And it's not to cast any dispersions on anyone's work up to this point. I, I think the point that has been made, that we're in a better position financially, that our books are reconciled, that things are flowing smoother than they have in years in this town. I mean, not to be funny, it took us five years to get a bathroom. It may only take us, you know, two years to get, get some of the other things we've already voted on in the town. But what doesn't happen, okay, is, is we have initiatives, we have ideas, we have strategies that aren't happening today. We don't have an economic development plan. It's hard for us to go out and find folks to manage the open space plan, folks to manage the master plan. In order to actually have a direction that we're going in the town, we're in a good, stable place financially today, okay? The audits are coming in, we're going to be in a position to do real financial planning, okay? To say that bringing in additional person in to provide that consistent guidance, yes, under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, anybody that says a town manager isn't under the direction of a Board of Selectmen is incorrectly stating that. They have, they do have a different level or a different position relative to department heads, but at the end of the day, the Board of Selectmen is still in essence the steering committee, whether you have a town manager or a town administrator. So that's a red herring, folks. Really what it comes down to is that a town administrator will provide consistent, available eyes on, on the day-to-day operations in the town.
Thirty seconds.
To take the foundation that we have today and maintain it, instead of going through the cyclical system where, okay, we're good today, but two years down the line, so our volunteers have moved, people have moved on to other things, they don't have time to give it, and we don't have that clear, like, leadership and process in place to provide the stability to move the town forward consistently into the future, instead of just picking up the pieces and sweeping out the problems from the past.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tony had his hand up.
Yeah.
You're next.
I, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. I believe we were called a nine-million-dollar town, we're an eight-and-a-half-million-dollar town, so I just want to make sure we do that as well. We are, we are a small town. I know that, you know, that, that, a lot of verbiage, you know, it's, we keep being referred to as a nine-million-dollar business, we're an eight-and-a-half-million-dollar town. We are a business, but, you know, it's, I know it takes a lot of the sting out of it when you call it a business. And I also just wanted to point out that the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee voted to not support this.
Carmen Eaton, thirteen West Main Street, Brookfield. Just to address a couple of questions, and I had a question I wanted to ask the advisory board.
Closest to the mic.
Okay, I'm sorry. Tom, eighty-eight percent of the towns, smaller and bigger than ours, in the Commonwealth, have town administrators. They seem to be doing pretty good. And we are a nine-million-dollar municipality. And being in business myself, I think the challenges of running a nine-million-dollar municipality is probably tougher than running a nine-million-dollar business. Because when you run a nine-million-dollar business, you can dictate and direct if you want to, but you have to get consensus when you run a municipality. So the challenges, I think, and having experience in both, are considerably tougher in a municipality. So I want to address that issue, and I think a town administrator will bring continuity. We have a selectman, and theoretically, every year, we can lose a selectman through the election process. And so we have that possibility of a constant turnover. A terminal administrator will bring consistency, which is important. The other thing I want to say is, I think the contracted treasurer has done an extraordinary job in a short period of time. The question I ask is, they are on contract.
Thirty seconds.
What does the contract say? Could they theoretically quit tomorrow? What does the contract say? What is the continuity we have in, in this organization who have done a good job for us? I'd like somebody to answer that.
That was to Tom, I believe, there was a question. Do you want to answer that, Tom?
So the, the contract for the treasurer's office is a thirty-day notice on either side.
I didn't hear the, thirty-day contract? Thirty days.
Gary Lincoln, Quaylock Street, Brookfield. I just wanted to point out that West Brookfield, it's on the chart here, has an eighty-two-thousand dollars.
Closer to the mic, please. Closer to the mic.
Has an eighty-two-thousand-dollar-a-year town administrator, and they were in as much financial trouble as we were last year. So this idea that a town administrator is going to fix everything is not right. And secondly, everybody's calling this a, a nine-million-dollar business. It's not a business when you're taxing people for the revenue. It's not a business.
Thank you. Well, I've got two on the balcony, right? Go ahead, in the balcony.
Hey, Barbara Wilson, eighty-six Weber Road. I'm very surprised that this is even on here tonight. I mean, I, I cannot understand why we keep doing this. When we want something like this, we always slide it into a special town meeting instead of taking it to an annual one. And tonight, we're doing it on top of the COVID, where people have not come out, some of them, because they can't wear the mask or they cannot get in with groups. We have not given the citizens of Brookfield the time to come and really vote on something that I think is essential. I understand that the seventy-five dollars that we're voting tonight, if we do it, is only for six months. And then, again, they, they will be voting on a wage for him, or her, whoever has the part. I am very much against what we're doing here tonight. I am with the advisory board and the select board, and I, I cannot understand why we would do it. But knowing it has been done before, and this is the way we slide things through, I am saying, don't do it. For once, stand up here, think of the people that we're going to be putting out of jobs in a time of crisis, when you're lucky if you've got bread on your table, or you've got a means of running a business. I think it's time we went hand-in-hand with each other and we say no to this, and if you want to pursue it, bring it up at the annual town meeting like you should.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Chafee, Town Farm Road, Brookfield.
Could you get closer to the mic? Couldn't I hear that?
Richard Chafee, Town Farm Road. I have two points. I've watched the fire department, the highway department, and a lot of other boards in town keep getting asked to put things off to the next year and next year. Some of the highway department equipment is done on, it, it's really in bad shape. Not all of it, but some of it's in bad shape. So I've seen a lot of people volunteer to do things. We have a great town, and everyone comes together when we need it. Instead of a town administrator, why don't we invest in what we have? Send Karen for training, give her a little more money, encourage her to stay, and we have something that's working. She's able, she could be trained, it wouldn't cost as much, and we already have the process in place. I don't support this seventy-five thousand. It's not seventy-five thousand. It's going to be much more health insurance with the benefits. I don't think that's what Brookfield needs right now. I think we have someone in place and I think we could make it a little better position. Send her for some training. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, and then Trudy. Mike?
I'd like to move that we pass over this article.
Motion has been made to pass over the article. Is there a second? Pass over. Has been seconded.
Kevin Urkel, one-thirty Long Hill Road. Mr. Moderator, point of order. Motion to pass over an article must be made before the article has been read.
So the motion to pass over has been made and seconded? I don't believe that's debatable.
It is debatable.
It is debatable, okay? I think you have to debate, debate the, the motion on the floor, which is to pass But there's a motion on the floor, we have to address that. So motion has been made and seconded to pass over. All those in favor, please signify a raising your card. Twenty-two. All those opposed, please raise your card. Or the motion is defeated. Now, Trudy, you can continue with your...
Trudy O'Connell, Hayden Avenue. In response to a question or an issue that was raised earlier, I believe by Mrs. Wilson, that things seem to be snuck into special town meetings, this article was presented for the annual town meeting, and at the request of the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen, the petitioners agreed to postpone the article to this meeting. So this was in no way a sneaky act. And I just want to say that it seems to me that this article, this, this issue has been discussed for many years. One of the reasons why it was postponed was because the financial issues were still so uncertain. They are not uncertain the way they were then. We do have the money. And it seems to me that it's about time that we elevated this town to a little more professional level and freed the hard-working, long-suffering Board of Selectmen from some of the things that they have to do, and had someone, as was pointed out earlier, who is a consistent person from Board of Selectmen to Board of Selectmen, who carries a kind of institutional memory that really benefits the town. So I would urge passage of this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a hand down here? Tom Regan?
Mr. Moderator, through you, I would just like to also follow on to Ms. O'Connell's response and say that in the warrant, this is a citizen's petition. The Board of Selectmen, as I understand it, and Town Council, please correct me if I'm wrong, the Board of Selectmen and the advisory board, we have no control. If a citizen's petition arrives and has signatures, it goes in the warrant because the citizens want it. It is part of our democracy that allows citizens to get things on the warrant, even, even if we didn't want them. So that is one of the reasons why we're discussing it today. There were enough citizens to put it on, in the book. That's why we're having it today. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion to move the question. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please signify a raising your card. Is this a two-thirds? I'm sorry, so I need counters? Hang on one second till the counters get in place. My count is ready. All those in favor of passing the motion, please signify a raising your card. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, we're voting to end discussion. All those in favor of ending discussion, please signify a raising your card. And opposed? Those opposed? No opposed. End discussion has ended. Now, all those in favor of passing the motion, please signify a... I'm sorry.
With clarification, the amount of money is for thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred, not seventy-five-thousand, it's something.
That's what was read? Okay. All those in favor of passing the motion, please signify a raising your card. Counters, report.
Forty-one. Nineteen. Nine.
Forty-one, nineteen, and nine.
Ten.
Ten? Ten?
Ten.
Ten?
Seven.
Seven. The motion passes sixty-nine to twenty-seven. Thank you. Article number fifteen. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow or sum of money to hire a municipal clerk for the tax collector's office for fiscal year 2021, or take any relative action thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town raise an appropriate twenty-six hundred dollars to hire a municipal clerk for the tax collector's office for the remainder of fiscal year 21.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
This is, uh, this is a recommendation from the...
Okay.
From the audit staff to better position the tax collector.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your card. And opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Article sixteen. Again, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll give you the summary. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow or sum of money to fund a two percent COLA raise for non-union town employees.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I move that the town raise an appropriate twenty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents for the purposes of this article, with such adjustments to various wages and salary budget lines containing FY21 annual budget voted under Article Two of June twenty-six, 2020. Annual town meeting is shown in an annotated warrant and further to reduce the amount voted under Article Two of June twenty-six, 2020, annual town meeting. Budget line item one ninety-nine, account number zero zero one nine four five five six zero zero dash zero zero zero. Further, the general insurance by forty thousand from one hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars to one hundred and eighteen dollars, one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, again, one hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, with the overall total operating budget for FY21 being eight million five hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents before any additional appropriations made at this October fifteen, 2020, special town meeting.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do we have a copy? Do you have a copy of that, Mike?
Yeah.
Here, okay.
So, so just...
Yes, go ahead.
So the word clear. What this does is this takes advantage of a favorable insurance credit, basically, negotiation.
Lower.
Oh.
Lower.
What this article does is that it takes advantage of a negotiated settlement for insurance for the year of premium, which was favorable to the town for forty thousand dollars. What this article also does is that in January, we have to meet minimum. Minimum wage is going to be increased. And what this allows us to do is that be prepared to fund the increase in minimum wage. And this further provides a two percent COLA back retroactive to July one for the town employees.
Discussion?
I'm definitely all for giving employees a raise. What I am concerned about is the two-year delay in implementing the Collins study, which, as I understand it, was a wage and salary personnel study that looked at comparable positions in other towns and did all the research needed to make recommendations for what people in Brookfield should be paid. We have kicked this can down the road, and the people who suffer are the employees. And giving a two percent COLA and saying, well, we'll do this next year, to me is, as a voter, as a citizen, as someone who appreciates what town employees do, unacceptable. And I would say, I would like to urge, I don't know if it's appropriate to make a motion, but I would like to urge that if indeed the Selectmen and the advisory committee decide to implement the Collins Center for Fiscal Twenty-two, that instead, if that's what their plan is, that instead there be a special town meeting before the annual town meeting, where we use free cash to fund the Collins Center report to raise people and adjust the salaries at a special town meeting and make them retroactive to July one, 2020.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please sign... Yes?
I think that's an actual motion.
I don't think it was a motion. I think...
I just need to know when this proposal is. It's not for this meeting, correct?
It's not a motion. As I understand it, it was a suggestion.
Suggestion. Thank you.
You squared. All in favor of this motion, please sig... Uh, motion, please signify by raising your card. And opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Article seventeen. Excuse me.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
I move that the town...
Go right ahead, Beth. Uh, Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote, excuse me, to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow or sum of money to fund the town hall improvement account, to fund a shortfall in budget, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town raise an appropriate two thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars to fund a shortfall in the town hall improvement account budget.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion?
Hello, Bill Simpson here, Chair of the Town Hall Improvement Committee. I'd just like to speak on this. This was, uh, just a... When we were revising the budgets due to the COVID issues and the expected to find twenty percent of revenue, uh, the advisory and, uh, I think through some discussions, we brought our, the Town Hall Improvement Committee budget went down about twenty percent, I believe. Uh, this would just raise us up to a five percent decrease year over year. So we're still taking the five percent decrease that was originally requested. This just returns us to that level where we're still less than last year, but not drastically less, so... Is there any questions?
Thank you. Tom Reagan?
Yes, Tom Reagan. I'd just like to address this, that Mr. Simpson is correct that, um, this is, uh, this is the amount that was, that we asked them to reduce their budget as part of the five percent cut in order to better position the town for expected financial turbulence. Uh, I will say that from the discussion of the advisory committee, we did not support this. And my reason for not supporting it was that we asked all the departments to cut their budgets. And we asked, and my thought is, is that we should continue asking them. I'm not, I don't like the idea of giving some departments back their money without a strong reason. And so through you, Mr. Moderator, I ask Mr. Simpson, is there a, is there something that has come up that makes this money necessary? Or are you simply saying, hey, things look good. Can we get that cut back? Can you explain to me what the need for this reappropriation of the money is?
Sure. I can't give you an exact dollar amount because the list of tasks that we have that would fit that dollar amount are way above our budget. Between the potential boiler that could go down at any various time. We have some motions in that for the capital improvement planning committee, but we don't know. We have a very old boiler in the town hall that we want to have some money for repairs and potential replacement if needed. Um, there's a carpet in the banquet hall, which is ancient, also needs to be replaced. There's window repairs throughout the building. We want to put a commercial dehumidifier in the server room for the town hall, which is a very damp room, but that costs a couple of grand, too. I mean, this is sort of the beginning of the list here, that there's the long-term storage and organization of the documents in the town hall, which take up a tremendous amount of floor space, which costs money and time to really properly dispose of, organize, and store. Um, there's, at the ADA transition report that was completed a couple of years ago, we're slowly going through and implementing the low-cost items on that is what we've been able to do so this past year. And courtesy of the sixty thousand in grants and money previously allocated, we've redone two of the bathrooms in the town hall. So we're making steady progress throughout the building. Um, but there's always more. And there's just some emergency masonry repairs, which I think we're going to be able to lump into a grant. But there's, the laundry list of town hall improvements is well beyond our scheduled budget. But we've been able to work within the budget. And last year, we were a little below our budget. So, you know, I'd like to turn us to less than we had budgeted previously, still a five percent reduction year over year. But, um, I think that would be appropriate to give us the money to keep moving forward, but not in any extravagant way. Thank you.
Tom, you were next.
Uh, Mr. Simpson, I'd like to rephrase my question. What are you going to do this year with that two thousand dollars that you would not be able to do without that money? I understand you have a very long list. It's an old building. There's a lot that needs to be done. But what's that money, what's this appropriation going to allow you to do that you would not be able to do without it?
Do you want to answer that first? Oh, go ahead, Mary Ray.
I have a clarification for Mr. Reagan.
And closer to the mic, please.
This was a twenty percent reduction in our budget. We had given a five percent reduction. The Board of Selectmen, in balancing their budget down five percent, reduced our budget an additional fifteen percent. This is just replacing that additional fifteen percent.
Thank you.
Um, so, Tom, I don't have like a, this is a two thousand dollar item list. I wish I could say, everything's going to cost X amount of dollars, but there's a lot of unknowns in the town hall with repairs. Like I say, we do the best we can with the limited budget that we have. And sometimes, like with the past year, we were holding money because we're still waiting on a platform lift to go in, and we've had issues with contractors. We don't, we're still hoping that, a long story, but, um, there's unknown costs in that project as well. So we have a lot of unknowns as we move forward with these projects. So I can't say there's one item that's two thousand dollars specifically, but there's a lot of items. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Seventeen, please signify by raising your card. And opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to accept a gift of property from the Brookfield, Massachusetts Boy Scout Troop One Fifty-Nine, a duly organized troop of the Boy Scouts of America, or the current owner, which property is located on Boys Ave.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Miss Carver.
What's that?
Corinna.
I move that the town accept a gift of property from Brookfield, Massachusetts Boy Scout Troop Number One Fifty-Nine as written in Article eighteen of the special town meeting warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
Uh, I'm taking my Selectmen's hat off for a moment and putting my moderator of the Brookfield Congregational Church...
Closer.
Better? Okay, so, all right. So I'm taking my Selectmen's hat off for a moment and putting my moderator of the Brookfield Congregational Church hat on. We sponsor the Boy Scout Troop. The Boy Scout Troop cannot hold property. Further, with all things going on with the Boy Scouts at national level and whatnot, we'd hate to have anybody come to town to suggest that they might be able to take possession of that property. So in cooperation with the Board of Selectmen and the church, we decided that the best approach to this is to have the town hold, just like any other property that the town holds, and that on a yearly basis, the Scouts would then, in turn, request the Board of Selectmen for permission to use the property year over year. It just, it won't change anything, but it protects that property for the Boy Scouts and the town. Thank you.
Further discussion? Tom?
The question I have is, what is the town's plan for managing this property? I heard Mr. Snyder say that it would be granted to use for the Boy Scout Troop, and I think that's a great idea. But there are other groups in town who might want to use that property. I specifically think of the Girl Scouts. My wife is one of the Girl Scout leaders in town. So I'm wondering if anyone can answer me that question.
So I'll put my Selectmen's hat back on. The Board of Selectmen will, in fact, regulate the use of the property. Again, it would be a permitted use year over year. So certainly, the Girl Scouts, if they haven't joined the Boy Scout... If the Girl Scouts hadn't joined the Boy Scouts already, they would have the opportunity to take advantage of the property. Again, the Finnies donated this property to the town, to the Boy Scouts in nineteen fifty-nine. And again, a lot of things have changed since nineteen fifty-nine. We're hopeful that through cooperation by the Boy Scouts and the Board of Selectmen, that we can continue the traditions the Boy Scouts have founded.
Thank you. Al?
Tom, this parcel is off Boys Ave. It has no road frontage, except on an old dirt paper road, and it backs up to a whole bunch of state land in East Brookfield. All of that land, I would think, is available for anybody to use. Does that answer your question?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Al, my thought was that it's more, I know that the Boy Scout Troop uses it for camping, and so how would contention of multiple groups want to use it for the same weekend? That's my concern about how has that been thought through? I know where it is. I've been meaning to get to it for years, and I just never get to it because other things come up. And I know, but from what I understand, it's nice. It's good for what they use it for. But how is the town going to manage it? Because if the town, right now, with the Boy Scouts owning it through the church, it's theirs. And no one else can use it without their permission. When it becomes the town's, now the town will have to provide equal access to it on a fair and nondiscriminatory basis, or whatever the right term is. And that's what I'm trying to get an understanding of how we've thought this through. I just want more information, but thank you. I know where...
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Clarence?
What this does is it puts it back in the...
Hold it closer.
The use of this property, it puts it in the Selectmen's hands, that there would be a land use permit year over year for the use of it. Or it could be, if there were other groups that wanted to take advantage of it, to have the Selectmen understand that so that we could work cooperatively with the youth groups to make sure that we take advantage of the property as the Finnies anticipated in nineteen fifty-nine.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to ask Clarence if it's okay through you. I noticed in there that it says, uh, which may be a nominal sum. Are we planning on charging the Boy Scouts for using the land that they currently own?
I would say certainly not.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of this article, please, motion, please signify by raising your card. And opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That was Article eighteen. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to dedicate the former so-called Lakeside Toban Campground, generally known on town of Brookfield, that has a success map NP one five D, and is more particularly shown on plan to be distributed at town meeting as a park in perpetuity for the town of Brookfield according to General Law, Chapter Forty-five, Section Three, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Beth.
I move that the town transfer care, custody, and control of the property, commonly known as the Lakeside or Toban Campground, as shown on the map, distributed at town meeting from the tax title custodian or other custodian to the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of dedicating the property as a public park in perpetuity of the town of Brookfield according to General Law, Chapter Forty-five, Section Three, and further, to so dedicate the property as a public park.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Marty Banish, eighteen Brunel Ave, Brookfield. I would request that this item be tabled, pending more information regarding this transfer of ownership of property for use as a public park. There is no information regarding what the town's expenditures are going to be to create this, to make this a park. What's it gonna cost for the removal of existing structures? What are the maintenance fees going to be? Are there going to be any facilities that have to be created on this property? Another issue is whether or not the property in its entirety has to be preserved as a park. Is the intention to provide lake access through that one property that butts the lake? If not, why can't that property be sold by the town for future taxable income? It wouldn't be nice to see us generate some kind of income off of areas of this property that do not have to be preserved. So pending some kind of information regarding all these issues, I would just recommend that we table this discussion, table this item.
Is that a motion? Is there a second? Seeing none. Point? Is that a second?
Yes.
A motion to table has been made and seconded. For one sec, for one sec. So let me ask you for clarification what your intention of the motion is. Lay in the table, or to postpone indefinitely until you get further information. There's two different kinds of motions. So the motion is postpone indefinitely for further information? Yes, correct. That's a, that's debatable, and it's also a simple majority. We need to, we need to take action on that motion. Discussion, go ahead.
My name is Tom Morse, also known as Silver Fox. Tribal member of Chibana Gungamang, Hopp Indians.
Closer to the mic, please.
I'm not gonna touch the mic, so. I've been working on the Adena Project for approximately five or six years now. The land at the Toban Campground has been dedicated as a cemetery. I would be deeply hurt if it was promoted as a park. There are tribal remains there from the Adena people. It is also documented, as Clarence knows. There is a large book in the, in the town office. Again, I would be deeply hurt if it was moved into, you know, a public park. UMass Ann Hurst, Eric Johnson, put a lot of time and work into finding those remains and artifacts, and a lot of work was done in repatriating those remains too. I brought all the information back to the tribal council, and I'm representing them here too. So I hope we can not make a public park where, you know, we can, we can hold ceremonies and things down there. I've been going down there for all these years.
Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds.
That's all, that's all I've got to say. I'd be, I'd be hurt if it was made a public park.
Thank you.
So just, just to address, so the grant writer came forward with the idea...
Closer to the mic.
I'll get it right by the end of the night. So, so the grant writer came forward with this idea of identifying it as a park for the purposes of being able to obtain money so that we could in fact make improvements, finish tearing down the buildings and the like. So again, there was no malicious intent in providing it as a park. It was more Kathy's idea of how to secure additional funds to continue the cleanup. And so, again, there's a report in the town hall. Please take advantage of it because we have years of research now as to what, what is in fact at Toban Campground. And the whole area, I mean, let's not kid ourselves. The town owns a place called Toban Campground. The area around that whole area is a sacred place. It is a burial ground. Others have found remnants of burials beyond the park. So this is a super secret, super sacred place that we need to kick, be able to take care of in perpetuity. And again, Tom, Kathy's intent was not to be denigrated or anything, the remains that are there.
Al?
A quick history. This was at one point cut up into a series of maybe twenty-five in one corner, small tent sites. They were sold off as condominiums. The town took them all back by tax title. And as a result, once they, all those little tent sites were taken back, the town became owners of the entire parcel. So the town currently does own, council agrees, the town does own this right now. So it's just a matter of clarifying it as a park land that can't get developed. So there's a motion on the floor to postpone indefinitely. It's a simple majority. Is there further discussion on that, to that point?
Mr. Moderator, I propose that we table it. We don't have to make this decision tonight. Again, it's Kathy's idea, way to secure funds. We can work on this and maybe provide some additional meeting, information for the annual town meeting.
So there's a motion on the floor to postpone indefinitely. So we need to take that, take that vote. All in favor of postponing indefinitely, please signify raising your card. In opposed, the motion passes. So there's postpone. Article twenty, to see if the town will raise an appropriated sum of money to support the opening of the South Pond Beach for twenty twenty-one, and that any fees allowed for the fines collected related to the operations of the beach be directed to the South Pond Beach Budget Line item to offset the operational expense, would take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Beth.
I move that the town raise and appropriate one thousand one hundred eighty dollars to support the opening of the South Pond Beach for twenty twenty-one, and that any fees allowed or fines collected related to the operation of the beach be directed to the South Pond Beach Budget Line item to offset the operational expenses.
Motion has been made and seconded. Clarence, you want to...
Just very quickly, you have a new committee that is related to the South Pond Beach. We had...
Closer.
Anyway, sorry. You have a new committee that is taking responsibility for the South Pond Beach and the management for it. Again, it's a property that's owned by Wildlife and that the town on a year-to-year basis has contracted to have advantage of the beach. Yes, it is used by other folks from other towns and the like. What this is going to do is we've had year-over-year issues with the beach where we've had people doing things that they shouldn't be doing. Within the contract with Wildlife, should we move forward again for another year, what we were, we are allowed to do is to collect fees. So again, that's something where we need beach monitors to be able to collect those fees. And so the eleven eighty is to provide signage, provide a couple of people to be able to monitor the beach. And again, should we have issues as we have had in this past summer where things kind of get out of control, we can, on typically hot weekends around July fourth, there will have people there that will be able to monitor and take action to move the police down if they need to. So again, it's a, just a little bit more than what we pay for port-a-potty at the, at the site. But again, but again, this allows us to take a little bit more responsibility and give the committee the resources that it needs to see if we can make an improvement at the beach. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Tim Simon, Rice Corner Road. I'd like to know, I'd like to know more about what the monitors are going to do, what fees they're going to collect that you're thinking about, and how many actual total hours they're going to be monitoring or whatever they're gonna be doing during the week, during the summer.
Basically, ten minutes to cover weekends. Yep, to cover weekends. So that, just a little bit of money to see what we can do because that seems to be the issue. Hot, hot days on weekends. So again, a couple of monitors to be able to do that. To also collect fees that are within the contract. And again, I don't have the contract with me tonight, but it's like five dollars per visit for a single person. I'm sorry. Yes, five dollars, and then it's like ten dollars for family, for, for the use. And there's the capability also to do it for a season. And again, I think it was for a family, it was twenty-five bucks for a season.
There may be good reasons to do that, but I'd actually hate to see that because I like the way the beach runs now.
Again, we're trying to balance the safety and the issues that have happened at the beach to be more proactive as far as cutting things off that are found there. It's just a way to approach it.
Are the issues that bad?
The neighbors would say yes.
What kind of issues?
What, what, what we've had. We've had fires. We've had trash left, monitoring of trash. So it's just an asundery of issues that have come. And again, it was early July again this year where we had to have police down. We were successful in fact to have the police be able to use from, from Stirbridge, monitor the beach on, on the water because of jet skis that were coming in into the beach inappropriately. It's just one example.
Yeah, I can see some of that because I was involved with the beach some time ago to starting it up. But I hate to see the officiousness of, you know, monitoring and asking people for fees. What about the other five days during the week?
We did not consider it at this time, Jim.
Yeah, I just, it just doesn't feel quite right to me. It seems like a little bit too much. But I, I can see your point, but I must say I feel uncomfortable with that.
Again, this is to support the committee, to see what we could do to change the dynamic for the next summer. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Tony?
Wait for a second, that's my to work. My question through you, Mr. Moderator, to, to Mr. Snyder. When the fees are decided for the beach, is this gonna be something that the town is gonna have a say in, or is this gonna be something that's gonna be enacted by a committee? Because this has been a beach that's been free to use for a long time. I think we've approved quite a bit of money just for things that, you know, that are needed or whatever, for twelve hundred bucks. I don't know why we gotta charge our residents. Maybe we can just charge the non-residents, or just, just wondering if it's something that the town is gonna say in.
So the fee structure is actually set by the Wildlife folks. It's part of the contract. And again, we have a choice about whether we apply it or not. So again, we want to make sure that we have monitors there so we can make sure we catch things before they get out of control. So that was one, one part of this, of the idea. Again, the committee's going to meet in November. And again, this was to say to them, a message to them, that the town in fact is in support of, of having a committee and supportive of the good functioning of the beach.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify raising your card. In opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Article twenty-one.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
Before we proceed on to the next article, I know this is going nowhere, but I'm gonna express it anyway. I would like to reconsider the vote on Article fourteen. I feel strongly that six months with people, maybe they don't have the degrees, but they've got the knowledge, and they brought this town to where it is so far. And from what I've heard from the people at the boards and the people that work with them and so forth, I feel that six months should be put aside and that vote should be taken to the annual town meeting. And then the people maybe will be further along with this COVID thing, and we will be concentrating more on this vote and the people that would like to get out here tonight to vote that can't. I would like to make a motion to reconsider that vote and take it to the annual town meeting.
So motion's been made and seconded to reconsider. Normally, reconsideration is only done if there is added information, or if there's some kind of error in the procedure, or it's illegal. I would ask the town council, is that a fair assessment of a reconsideration vote, motion? All right. After review with town council, that's a, that's a legal motion. So the motion has been made and seconded. I don't see that it's debatable. So all those in favor of reconsidering article? You got your hand up just in time.
I'm not sure I understand how you can reconsider if the number of voters is different than when we voted. I know, I've seen at least three people who voted for this have somewhat like left the meeting. You could argue that you could do this at the very last and keep all the people who are for or against something to stay and say you're gonna call a recount after a number of people left. So I don't understand how you can take a vote now with the population in this room changing. If you could answer that?
Can you hear it? Yeah, you can. Through you, Mr. Moderator. The rules provide for motions for reconsideration. You could only reconsider motion, you can only make a motion to reconsider once throughout the town meeting. So I have oftentimes seen in towns that have this situation where there's a hot button issue, a vote is taken, and there's an immediate motion to reconsider, and that is...
making the motion had to have been on the prevailing side, had to have voted in favor of the motion. I'd like clarification about that.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Time does absolutely say that. However, Town Meeting Time, which is the book when I point to Town Meeting Time, is the book that we use to regulate these proceedings absent your bylaw. Town Meeting Time does say that, but at the same time, Town Meeting Time recognizes the difficulty of a moderator trying to figure out who voted for what. So it's really the call of the moderator, if he's going to allow it. I don't see anything in your bylaws that would prevent him from allowing this motion to go forward.
So it's my understanding it's your call, Mr. Moderator? Right?
Barbara, did you vote for the proposal or against the proposal?
I voted against.
All I'm asking is this be referred to the annual town meeting, and I don't feel six months, when people have shown tonight, and I'm amazed at how much people on these boards, the advisory board, the selectmen and everybody, are saying that our people are doing a good job, and it has shown that. And taking it to the town meeting like we should, instead of trying to put it through on a special of something so important.
The town meeting times that we use to run this meeting says that they have to be on the winning side in order to reconsider that vote. So the motion is denied. Moving on to Article 21. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to the library book materials account to meet Mass. General Law Chapter 78, Section 19B, Section 5, 605, CMR 4.01, I guess that's paragraph 5, to extend a reasonable portion of the library's total budget on the library materials or take any other action thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Lincoln?
I move that the town raise an appropriate $719 to the library book materials account to meet Mass. General Law Chapter 78, Section 19B, 5 and 605, CMR 4.05, to extend a reasonable portion of the library's total budget on library materials.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there a presentation?
Yeah, we just have to do the $719 to make sure we're not out of step with the library commission.
Sorry, we need a certain level of library material funding in order to keep our, the funds that we get from the state by having a public library. And so this budgetary adjustment is required in order to ensure we get the appropriate state aid.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify a raising your card. In opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Article 22. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to the library book materials account to meet Mass. General Law Chapter 78, Section 19B, 5 and 605, CMR 4.05, to extend a reasonable portion of the library's total budget on library materials.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mike?
Well, folks, I guess we can say no to this now that we're getting the future town administrator to help out with human resources, so I urge you to vote no.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify a raising your card. In opposed? But I'm going to go back in. Those that are in favor, I want to take a count, please. Those are in favor of the motion, please signify a raising your card. Counters? Repeat the motion.
Again, this is to raise, to appropriate $2,500 to fund human resource duties that are not covered under the current treasurer contract or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Lincoln?
I move that the town raise an appropriate $2,500 to fund human resources duties that are not covered under the current treasurer's contract.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mike?
Well, folks, I guess we can say no to this now that we're getting the future town administrator to help out with human resources, so I urge you to vote no.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify a raising your card. In opposed? But I'm going to go back in. Those that are in favor, I want to take a count, please. Those are in favor of the motion, please signify a raising your card. Counters? Repeat the motion.
Again, this is to raise, to appropriate $2,500 to fund human resource, to fund $2,500 to fund human resource duties that are not covered under the current treasurer contract.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion, please signify a raising your card. Counters, please? Two? Two?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. All right, those opposed, please signify a raising your card.
Eight?
Nine?
Four?
Motion passes 41 to 21. Thank you. Article 23. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money for replacement of the police security system server or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Lincoln?
I move that the town raise an appropriate $2,352.24 to replace the police department's security service system.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify a raising your card. In opposed, motion passes. Article 24. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to fund the assistant town clerk account or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move that the town raise an appropriate $2,029 to fund the assistant town clerk account.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify a raising your card. In opposed, motion passes. Article 25. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to the board of health expense account or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr.?
I move that the town raise an appropriate $1,159 to the board of health expense account.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify a raising your card. In opposed, motion passes. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the board health clerk account to the board of health expense account or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Snyder?
I move that the town transfer $1,970 from the board of health clerk account to the board of health expense account.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the article, please signify a raising your card. In opposed, motion passes. Article 27. To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the water department surplus account to the water department operating expense account or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Snyder?
I move that the town transfer $3,440 from the water department surplus account to the water department operating expense account.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Again, this is to cover new mandated expenses.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify a raising your card. In opposed, motion passes. Article 28. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to fund a shortfall in the highway clerk's wages or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Snyder?
I move that the town raise an appropriate $3,691 to fund the shortfall in the highway clerk's wages.
Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion?
Again, this was a mess at the end.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify a raising your card. In opposed, motion passes. Article 29. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 5 of Financial Affairs, Section 7 of General Law, general bylaws of the town of Brookfield relating to the capital improvement committee by striking out the number 5,000 and replacing it with the number 10,000 as shown in the bowl below.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Crawford?
I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 5 Financial Affairs, Section 7 of the general bylaws of the town of Brookfield as written in Article 29 of the special town meeting warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify a raising your card. In opposed, motion passes. Article 30. To see if the town will transfer a sum of money to the general stabilization account or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Crawford?
I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate $120,000 to the general stabilization account.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify a raising your card. In opposed, motion passes. Article 30. To see if the town will transfer a sum of money to the general stabilization account or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Crawford?
I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate $120,000 to the general stabilization account.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Reagan?
I move that we amend the amount in this motion from $120,000 to $70,000, with the intent of the new amount maintaining our levy headroom consistent in this fiscal year and past fiscal year, with the objective of maintaining a tax rate consistent over years.
What is the number again, please?
The new number is $70,000, seven zero thousand.
So that's a motion to amend? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to amend has been made and seconded. All those in favor, discussion? Anybody want to explain why? Okay, this is a motion to amend the amount from 120 to 70,000. All in favor, please.
Can you explain more? Why, what is this?
You want to answer that question?
I'd be happy to answer the question. The levy headroom is the number that we control that we use to try and make, it's like, the intention is, one of our objectives is to maintain a stable tax rate. The $120,000 we recommended was based on the floor approving the articles that we recommended and skipping over them. The floor has made different decisions, it has approved articles we did not recommend, so that's additional spending. So in order to still land at that same levy headroom number, we need to reduce the amount of money being put into stabilization, because some of the money we intended to put in stabilization is being used to fund the generator and the town administrator. So the intention of this motion is to maintain a stable levy headroom number year over year, which will lead to a more stable tax rate year over year, which we believe is good for the town. And basically, okay, so do I need to explain more?
Okay, is that good? Ms. Lincoln?
When I made my comments on the hiring town administrator, I had said that the money was going to be coming out of this, and nobody had questioned this out of 120,000. And now we're going against our promise that we made to the townspeople, we would put that amount of money into stabilization account. So the way I feel now, what kind of faith does the town have of the board of selectmen if they're not going to put what they promised back to the voters of the community?
Ms. O'Connell?
Question, how much is in stabilization before we vote on this motion?
Somebody answer that? Microphone, punk?
I don't have any exact figure with me. It's in the neighborhood of $476,000.
Within our new financial policies, what would, as I recall, it's 5% of the operating budget, so that would be roughly $450,000 is the target goal for stabilization?
I think we had set in our new financial policies a goal of between 5 and 8%.
Okay, 5 and 8.
Not a strict 5.
Okay, so if we're now going to be transferring 37,000?
Seventy.
Seventy thousand, we're going to have $546,000 in stabilization?
Yeah, give or take, we gain quarterly interest from the trust company.
Okay, so we're in pretty good shape with stabilization even with this lower amount. We don't have to transfer $120,000 or some other number simply because we promised it before. The picture has changed, right? We're in good shape for stabilization going forward, particularly if we vote this amount.
We are in decent shape for stabilization. The goal was to put back the money that we had borrowed, whether the town, or I should say whether the board of selectmen and the advisory board decide to put the remainder of the money back into the general stabilization fund, or whether they decide at the annual town meeting to set up a capital purchases stabilization fund, which is what a lot of towns decide to do when they reach their end goal of, you know, the highest percent possible in their financial plan. I believe we said ours is 5 to 8%, so if they reach the 8% in general stabilization, they'll open up a secondary stabilization set for capital purchases and set an end goal for that in the in the, somewhere in the neighborhood of 5 to 8%. So that way, if there is a year that you don't have substantial free cash or if you want to set in your capital plan that so much is spent out of free cash every year and so much is spent out of capital stabilization to fund the large-scale capital purchases that we want. So we shouldn't be putting money away.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, hang on, Punk.
So I have a few concerns about this. Funding anything through raising and appropriating and stabilization is very unusual for us to do that. In fact, generally what we do is we take our free cash at the end of every annual town meeting or special town meeting and we apply that to our stabilization fund. Considering the fact that we've spent a lot of money tonight on raising and appropriating to fund the articles that we have before us tonight and that we are in good shape with stabilization and we are building that up in next fiscal year, we anticipate having a good sum of free cash to use for our future capital purchases. I think it makes sense for us to not raise and appropriate to put any money into stabilization. We've raised and appropriated a lot of money tonight. Let's sit on what we have and when free cash comes, let's start resupplying our stabilization fund. So I'm going to move that we pass over this article.
Okay. Okay. That proposed, that motion has to be made on a main motion. This is an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? So this is a vote to accept the amendment amount of $70,000. All those in favor, please signify raising your card. In opposed? The motion passes. So now, we're back to the article, the original motion with the $70,000. Move the question. All right, that's a two-thirds vote. Counters? All those in favor of moving the motion, please signify raising your card.
Thirty-one.
Twenty-two.
Five.
And those opposed? Motion passes. No. So now we have to vote on that, that motion. Article 30. All those in favor of approving the amended article, please signify raising your card. In opposed? Motion passes.
Now I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your card. In opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Al.